February fifth, 2019, 10:00 AM, Commissioners' Courtroom and County Administration Building, 200 site tech seventies, week one of six. The first item is the invocation pledge of allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag. I'll need to repeat those. Father, I want to thank you for your love, your mercy, and your grace to us. I want to thank you, Father, that we do live in a country that nobody else has the freedoms that we have. Father, I want to pray for the leaders of our country, our president and Congress, that they'll make decisions that most benefit our country. Father, I pray that you'll be with our state leaders and with us this morning. I pray that you'll be with our law enforcement and first responders, that you'll keep them safe, and our military. I ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Mine is on. Is she coming in now?
Testing.
Maybe that's better. I'll try to get closer to the mic. It's called for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we will... Number three is presentation and discussion. A is presentation by Mike Record of Architect Studios with results of Brazos County AgriLife Extension Building feasibility study. Mike?
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Is it on?
Yeah.
You good? Okay.
Lift it up.
You may want to tilt it up. There you go. I have a brief presentation for you on the extension office. We were retained to do a feasibility study of the facility. Feasibility study of the existing building, a program of spaces for a possible new building, and a cost estimate of what that might be. The question was why a new building, the existing building, is out of date technology-wise. It's very small relative to the program that they need. They just need more space in there. It does not meet current building codes or handicap accessibility codes. With feasibility study, we walked through the existing building and looked at the spaces that were there, met with the administration to determine what the new needs would be for a new facility. The existing building's about 3,500 square feet. When we did the program, it came in about 11,000 square feet of the needs. We reduced that back based on a hypothetical cost per square foot, so we got that back down to about 9,160 square feet. Thanks, please. And it's the program of spaces is what this next page is. The highlights on that would be a very large meeting space, proceeding up to 120 people. Sorry. Thank you. For me, up to 120 people. We had another medium-sized conference room, master gardener storage, a lot of storage needs because right now the offices are just packed with boxes and they really need additional space. It's very difficult to meet in the offices with clients. There's just very tight space in there. We also have the cooking kitchen that's in there, which is a big need to have some improvements on that.
Yes.
So those were the highlights on the space requirements. We did a cost estimate based on this program only, no drawings or anything, so it's just a kind of a rough square footage cost on it. Bond Construction was the company that helped put this together for us. And we compared the site that was on Highway 21 versus the site that's adjacent to the tax office. The site on 21 had some complications with removing the existing building, refurbishing the parking lot that was there. The site by the tax office obviously already has the parking that's there, so all the site utilities are at that point. So we had a pretty substantial savings to go with it on that tax office site. I said tax office, adjacent to the tax office. So with this tax office site, the estimated cost to construction was $1,938,000, about $211 a square foot. And that was the construction cost, so that remained about 20% of the remaining budget was for contingencies, furniture, fixtures, and any other soft costs on the project. So the total budget for the project is set at $2.5 million, and that's where the update is right now.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When you mentioned the space, it's hard to stand up in that building. I can't imagine trying to work there.
It's very compact.
It is. If two people standing in the aisle is blocked.
I hadn't had an opportunity to visit with Ms. Anthony, but the garden itself, as far as that goes, their proximity of their building now and the garden that they have and maintain out there, is that going to be replicated on this side? Or are they still going to keep the garden out there where it was?
My understanding is garden is staying where it is.
Okay, so the garden would stay where it was. This site would be totally dedicated to the office and administration.
There is also additional area there that could be used for...
For gardening.
The garden area going forward as well.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, there's some... Back where that pad was, we burned... There was a big burn. We've spread all that, and so that's an ideal location for the master gardeners in the future, you know, as they move forward.
Excellent. Thank you.
Then I'll look. Do you want to hear anything? Dusty?
Sure. Sure.
We definitely appreciate everything that you're doing for us. Little bumpy road getting to this presentation today, but I think it was a little more discovery of some great information to get everybody on board moving forward from that standpoint. You talk about all this stuff. Our horse committee meets today at noon, and we usually cook for them if we can. So we have Ms. Janice and Ms. Emily in there making chicken enchiladas, and Ms. Flora was in there trying to use the kitchen as well, getting ready for a program somewhere else. So it was elbow to elbow.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the daily occurrence, so.
Yes, and you all work well together. I commend the staff because, you know, they've taken that as a challenge rather than, you know, throwing up their hands and running for other parts, but thank you all. You make it work, and it's not easy.
So the next step, as far as this capital project for the extension office, we will work and bring back to the court a design contract for the architect services. Does anybody have any other questions or concerns?
I'd like to know why was it scaled back? Well, if it was just the expense from... You scaled it back from 11,000 square feet to 9,000, so why?
Budget.
Budget limits? Okay.
Budgets are driving force. We want to get them as much space as that we possibly can.
I agree.
We have room in the program for expansion in the future years for agents or staff that we do not currently have employed.
Okay.
And so we are planning for expansion or further use to come for people that aren't there yet, but we're trying to make sure that we keep it within the budget.
Well, keep in mind, prices are going up, so if we're going to hope to expand, we want to maximize that.
I have a question on the kitchen. If we're talking about a cooking school kitchen and we're only talking about 160 square feet, that 10 by 16 seems kind of small.
It does seem small, but that is part of the larger meeting room. This will be part of that room.
Sort of like it is now.
It's a large meeting room.
Yeah, you've got the kitchen, and then it eases out to the meeting space.
Yeah, okay.
Correct. That's oven and counter space, and then we do have the island that's out in front for the displays.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You got anything else, Charles?
Thank you, Charles.
Okay.
Thank you for the extension and their tireless work. I know they put a lot of time in coordinating it all, and then, of course, Mike has done a tremendous heroic effort trying to coordinate all the information to try to get it to present to y'all.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. B is a presentation by Dr. Rebecca Dunsing with the results of the FY 2018 Economic Impact Analysis for Brazos County Expo Complex. Call, you're going to lead it off. Okay.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. First off, I want to recognize the staff. This is kind of our core staff out at the expo. You guys stand up. I know some of you don't know them, and some of you do, so that's why I want to recognize them. Donnie Chapel and Jacqueline Foster are our sales and marketing folks, and they had the challenging job of trying to schedule all these events that we're having. So they do a remarkable job. And then Jerry and Lonnie take care of the outside events and do... I mean, if you've ever been out there and noticed the setup, I mean, it's just a tireless job that we do week in, week out, and these guys keep the wheels rolling on that thing out there. So I just want everybody to recognize them and understand that, and this is the core staff. It's not our whole staff, but these guys kind of keep it going, and it's about... Dr. Dunsing is going to give us, you know, quite a few numbers and statistics, but all of that really boils down to this staff that makes everything happen. So appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, the presentation this morning provides the results of the Sixth Annual Economic Impact Study completed for Brazos County Expo Complex in FY 2018, which is October 1st, 2017, through September 30th, 2018, our 11th year of actual operation. Expo officially opened in October 2007. Within five years, we knew that we were in a growth mode and that we needed to track that growth and demonstrate accountability to the people of Brazos County. Dr. Dunsing, an expert in economic impact analysis with the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service, has been independently contracted to complete Brazos County Expo's impact analysis each year since FY 13. For the past six years, total economic output generated by expo visitors in Brazos County has increased by at least 10% each fiscal year as the expo has grown our brand and attracted larger events. In 2017, Brazos County invested in Expo's Phase III expansion. That expansion was completed in late October 2017, and the results of the FY 18 study show our best year yet. In FY 18, per the results of the study, the expo contributed approximately $21 million to the county's economic output or gross sales and approximately 215 jobs. That figure is 75 to 100% larger than our FY 17 impact because your investment has allowed us to attract larger events, bringing more people over more days and spending more money. We don't expect to double our growth again in FY 19. The Phase III expansion opened many opportunities for new events and affords recurring events the ability to expand, such as the American Quarter Horse Association Youth World Cup and the National Australian Shepherd Dog Show. Those opportunities fueled our FY 18 growth and set a new baseline for us. We are competing at a new level. We will continue to leverage our expanded capabilities to attract high-profile events. For example, we will host the Texas State Four-H Horse Show beginning this summer for five consecutive years through 2023. We routinely host multiple events per weekend. We hosted 193 events in addition to the fair in FY 18 and welcomed more than 139,000 people through our doors. We also actively manage our calendar with the purpose of attracting and retaining those events that provide a strong contribution to the local economy. Our staff works extremely hard to ensure our events and guests want to return to Brazos County. Again, our growth won't double in 2019, and I can't predict how the U.S. economy will affect consumer spending. Neither can Dr. Dunsing, but we do expect our impact to continue to grow. Our staff continues to grow our brand and client base and encourage additional economic impacts within the county. Dr. Dunsing is going to report on those economic impacts this morning. She is an associate professor and extension environmentalist for community economic development with the Texas A&amp;M University AgriLife Extension Service. After the presentation, Dr. Dunsing will answer any questions from members of the court, and then we'll move to the atrium for any remaining questions. Dr. Dunsing?
It's... Oh, sorry. Sorry. And here's... Oh, thank you. I'm a little shorter than the other guys. All right. Morning, Judge and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here with you all this morning. As Carl mentioned, it's always real easy to report really good news. So we're just going to jump right in. The major story this year is the expansion. As Carl mentioned, $21 million in that three-year average spending pattern as far as total output across the economy, that coming from the direct impact of $14.5 million in spending across all events. Again, you know, we talk about this every year, but just as a reminder, we use that three-year average spending for a couple of reasons. One, the survey... The staff does a great job of surveying a variety of events each year, trying to get a representative spending pattern, but there can only be so many surveyed each year, and so when we average that over three years, we get three times the number of events that are going into that average. And also, we're able to even out some of the economic fluctuations that we see in the macroeconomy. But again, $21 million this year and 216 jobs, as opposed to last year when I was standing here, that three-year average spending pattern started with direct spending of $7.3 million, and the total was $10.5 million, so almost twice where we were last year in terms of this three-year spending pattern. Maybe I'm just not sure when I'm clicking. Again, what's really driving this this year is not how much people are spending. I'm going to talk about that in a little bit, and spending is a little soft, and we're not sure where that's going to go. But the Phase III expansion really did allow a lot of new events, new people, and more person days out at the expo this year. So where we were last year, they hosted 163 events, 164, including the fair, and traditionally we have not included the fair in the economic impact analysis. This year, 30 more events, what, 192, over almost 100 more days. The number of people being way up this year, 124.5 without the fair, 139,000 with the fair versus 86 last year, and then those person days, up 80,000 person days. And that's how we calculate the spending, is based on person days. A couple of things to note within there. The number of horse shows, and horse shows have traditionally been a strong spending category. Horse shows went from 14 horse shows last year to 20 this year, including that AQHA Youth World Cup that was 14 days. And so that almost doubled the number of person days from 38,000 last year to 73,000 this year. Similarly, conferences and career fairs, you see this year, there's 20,000, almost 21,000 in that category. Last year, there was 13,000. But we actually carved out, I don't know if I can do it from back here, but there are the other competitions. We carved out a new category this year out of that, conferences and career fairs, things like youth wrestling, some of the gaming tournaments and academic tournaments that are bringing people in. So really, you've got a doubling there from 13,000 to 26,000 as well. So again, it really is the number of events out there, the size of the events that are driving these numbers today. Looking at the spending, this is non-local person day expenditures. Again, we throw out, you know, the people who are there from the county economy. We assume they're going to spend their money here anyway. These are people who are based on their zip code coming into the county and spending new money here. And these aren't small numbers. When we look at that total, you know, we think about, well, what do I spend in a day? And by the time I bought my groceries and a few other things, probably $30 to $50. But when you're going somewhere, you're spending more money. You're having to buy food, out gas. You're somewhere new. Maybe you want to pick up some souvenirs or what have you. The other piece is, you know, we know that the expansion has been funded as well by the hotel occupancy taxes have contributed to that. Lodging is, other than access fees, what they're paying to participate in the events. Lodging is the biggest expense that we've got coming out of here. I do want to mention, as I said, I'm a little uncertain going forward where spending is going to be. In our three-year average, we rolled out 2015. So, you know, this year it's 2016, 2017, and 2018. Last year, we had 2015 in there. If you remember 2015, which was really the last few months of 2014 calendar year and beginning of 2015, that was not a good economic time, and that spending was bad in 2015. So that was really hurting us. 2016, on the other hand, was really strong. We're kind of back down now in 2018, more normal, but a little lower than last year. And so I have some... I almost... I told Carl, I said, "It's too bad you guys didn't start this expansion in a really lousy spending year," you know, because your numbers were going to drive it up no matter what. But we don't know what's going to happen next year. For example, the horse shows last... Were up this year on the three-year average. It's 171 versus 176 last year, but just the 2018 spending was $90 per person day. Last year, it was 126. 2016, 282. So you can see, we've got some things in there that we're just not sure about. Conferences look the same way. On average, it's up 195 over 176, rolling out 2015, but this year was 93 versus 179 last year, 295 in 2016. So now, on the other hand, we've got rodeos, which are up overall, $142 this year versus 98 last year, and the average at 121 versus 94 last year. So that was strong. It's not an across-the-board thing, but I do have some uncertainty. We have continued uncertainty about the economy rolling forward. On the other hand, the third piece mentioning about, you know, lodging being an important piece of this, it's not in the report that you received, but using that three-year average, hotel tax both for the city and the county, about $530,000. This last year, sales tax about $89,000. Is it working? Can y'all hear?
No, I meant the...
Oh, no, sometimes I click at the screen instead of the computer. Yeah, no. I wanted to bring this up again, kind of making that point about spending and where it may go. This is the surveyed horse shows this year, and you can see that total especially bouncing around a lot. The green line is that Youth World Cup, a strong event, not the strongest. Also, though, if you think about access fees, which aren't local, we take those out a lot of times unless it's something that's organized in the county. That was a really strong spending event this year, but you can just see the variability that's going into these averages. And again, that was a huge event. It was 14 days, but on average, it was about 10 days that each person was here. Hopefully, the state horse show, being a similarly large, long-term event, will kind of bring some of that back. But then when we look at the average, and this is inflation-adjusted, you can see, man, that 2016 had huge access fees because of some of the events were here, but even just at the end of that tail, total without access, you can see 2016 was well above 14 and 15. 17 edged down a little, 18 edged down a little bit more, and we're just not sure what's going to happen. We're still well up from where we were a few years ago in terms of the spending that's happening based on the types of the events that are being brought in, but a little uncertainty there moving forward. Okay, so back to the good news off the soft spending. You know, this is almost where we were last year, just with this one category. Horse shows is almost where we were last year with $10.5 million in output across the whole entire facility. Last year, we were at 5.3, so we almost doubled in the horse show category again. We had a lot more horse show days this year than they did the previous year. So those numbers are really driven, again, by the size of what's going on out there and the sheer number of person days. Livestock shows, right about where we were last year. This is very comparable. Last year, output was 1.27 million and 13.1 jobs, so right on target. Again, those person days were just right almost the same as they were the previous year. Last year, we didn't have any dog shows to report. Carl mentioned... Ooh, and I went too far. Carl mentioned that Australian Shepherd Show this year. There were about 18 livestock shows and two dog shows, but that Australian Shepherd Show was huge. The dog show actually ended, as a category, had twice as many person days as livestock shows did, which is how you end up with this $3.2 million in output and 32 jobs. So that's a strong sector overall. Again, it's not one that we were able to report last year. They didn't have the dog shows there. They did a couple years ago, so hopefully that's something that will continue. The length of those events combined with the spending is really a positive for the expo. Rodeos, roping, and other equine events, this is really not numbers-driven. Those numbers are pretty much the same. Person days are about equal to what they were last year, but spending was up. This was a category where spending did jump. We talked about that a little bit ago. So last year, the total output was 1.9 million. This time, the direct was 1.7, so people spending directly, 1.7 million, total output of 2.5 million across the county economy and almost 24 jobs. With the conferences and career fairs, I mentioned that not only did we have more of those this year than last year, we had a lot more people in that category. Last year, we were reporting a total output of 1.6 million and 15.5 jobs, and again, that was including what we have now in other competitions we've carved out. So really, we're almost looking at $3 million... Sorry, $4 million in output and almost 40 jobs if we were going to compare to last year, but we've carved out that other competitions category that's almost $1 million in output and 10 jobs as well. And those are really the major. There are also the trade shows and spectator events that are in your report, but those are the major events. And so across the whole entire expo, again, it's that 14.5 million in direct spending by people coming from outside the economy, $1.1 million in output. What we're really interested in, or I'm interested in as economist, is that value-added or contribution to what we'd call the county's GDP at $10.5 million and $6 million of that being labor income. And then, of course, the 216 jobs. When we look at 2018 spending, again, I mentioned spending was not as strong this year as it has been, for example, in 2016. So that's a bit lower at $17.8 million in output. And that year-over-year growth that Carl mentioned, you know, we've been right there. We've had some really good years, a lot of growth over the past years as they ramped up for some stuff, attracted some different events and so forth, almost doubled this year in terms of that three-year average spending. Again, for all the reasons I've mentioned, that makes me a little bit nervous, but even if we look at just last year's 2017, one-year spending to this year's spending, that's still a 78% growth just in that one year. So, you know, the growth is definitely real. There's definitely a new baseline out there with the Phase III expansion. Where spending takes that in the next year, I'm not really sure. We were talking, we had our meeting here a week or two ago. One of the things, we've got a lot of data built up now since that 2012, 2013 time. To be able to look at the best way to attract events, you know, maybe having an event every year isn't the best way. Maybe we find out that if we get an event here for two years or three years, that spending starts to taper off because people have figured it out, right? How to save money. We let them go away for a couple years, we bring them back, you know, maybe that spending ups again. And so we can kind of look at some of those trends, and of course, balancing that with the needs of the client and the facilities and so forth that they have. Do y'all have any questions? All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. It's always nice to have someone from the outside take a look at the numbers that are provided and kind of tell us what's going on, and Expo staff does a great job. We've got lots of good employees out there, and I'll continue to do what you do. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Come on up.
I just mentioned one more person here that slid in, Fiona Senda.
Oh, yeah, Fiona, yeah.
We want to recognize her as well. And then just a fair for us out there, but also she wears the Expo hat quite a bit. She helps us with sales and marketing some, and helped us with our new website that we got up and up, so we want to recognize her.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Okay.
I was at the expo Thursday and Friday of last week, as was the judge, and the change from one night to another is nothing short of miraculous, and you all do a great job, so thank you.
Yeah, I mean, and I know while we were out there, I guess it was, I don't remember if it was Thursday or Friday night, there were trailers coming in, so I know y'all had more than one event going on at the same time, and I know that's part of what the numbers that we see today are because not only can you have bigger events, but you can have more than one event going on at the same time. Great job, staff. I don't know how y'all handle it, but I know it's a lot of work, but thank you.
And they do a great job.
They do, indeed.
We will move on to consider and take action on Agenda Items 4 through 22. Number four is Resolution 19-004, Providing for Public Sale of Property Acquired by Brazos County from Delinquent Taxes.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five is Appointment of Mary Ann Quizimano to the Brazos County Historical Commission. Term of appointment is 1/1/19 through 12/31/20.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye. Number five is Appointment of Mary Ann Quizimano to the Brazos County Historical Commission. Term of appointment is 1/1/19 through 12/31/20.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is Reappointment of the Following As fire Commissioners to Brazos County Emergency Services District Number One. Term of appointment is 1/1/19 to 12/31/20. Lynn Elliott and Taylor Gibson.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is Request from Commissioner Nancy Berry for the Exception to the Travel Policy Regarding the Maximum Hotel Rate of $160 in Austin on February 11th, 2019. Commissioner Berry will travel with Brian College Station Commerce to discuss legislative affairs. Least expensive hotel available in downtown Austin is $302 plus tax.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight is Acceptance of Donated Property to the Information Technology Department Consisting of 24 Used HP Wireless Access Points Valued at Approximately $200 Each from College Station Independent School District.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is Request from Juvenile Department for the Following Personnel Request with Effective Date, February 5th, 2019. This change will have no effect on FY 2019 Juvenile TJJD Grants. Move JPO Title IV, Class Code 1887, Position 1, Group 18, Step 2, Pay Code 014 from Division 312130, Pre and Post Adjudication Division 2, Division 312110, Basic Probation.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 10 is Approval of the Following Job Descriptions.
Move approval, A and B?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve A and B. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 11 is Law Enforcement Location Agreement and a Law Enforcement License Agreement with Forest Productions and Oxygen Media LLC for the filming in the administrative offices of Sheriff.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number... Charles?
For this next item, Judge, purchasing respectfully requests that we add the County Engineer, Ms. Parthena Benergi, to that evaluation committee. That was omitted in there.
So you're going to have A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. And G.
Yes, ma'am. And she would be a voting member, please.
She is a voting member. Very good.
Okay. So number 12 is Approval of the Following Committee for the Evaluation of Proposal for RFP 19-096 Rehabilitation of Arrington Road to...
Move approval, A through F, and...
A through G.
And including the county engineer.
Second? Was that a second question?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made in second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 13 is Permission to Advertise for RFP Number 19-096 Rehabilitation of Arrington Road.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 14 is Renewal of Contract 19-114R for Hydro Muck Seating, County Rideaways with Britton Hydro Seating.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is Renewal of Contract 19-117R for Transportation of Diseased and Cremation Services with Hillier Funeral Home.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 16 is Acceptance of Special Warranty Deal with Alvin Stetts Trustee for Alvin Stetts Revocable Trust for .81 of 1 acre of land to be used for improvements on Leonard Road Located Precinct 4.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 17 is Expenditure Journal Entries FY 18/19 010098 through 010099.
Move of approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 18 is Tax Refund Applications.
Move approval, A through L?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve A through L. L, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 19 is Commissioners Court Minutes for the Following Dates.
Move approval, A through E?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 20 is Budget Amendments. Budget Amendments FY 18/19, 19.1 through 19.6.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 21 is Personnel Change Status.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 22 is Payment of Claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, Claim Number 8011845 through Claim Number 8012055.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. And we've got an endendum that was added to the agenda. It's Law Enforcement Location Agreement with a Law Enforcement License Agreement with Forest Productions and Oxygen Media LLC for filming in the Auxiliary Court Number One, formerly known as 85th District Court.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion.
Judge, I think, first, did you say that there's no actual license agreement, it's just an allocation agreement?
That's right. There's no license agreement. I think the license agreement has covered both, I believe.
Okay. And that was Commissioner Barry and Holly.